All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting of the Development Commission. Tonight we'll be discussing the Development Commission authority regarding sign review, and we'll be doing some mock permit for training purposes using our new design guide. So with that as an opening, I'd like to start the meeting right now. And Lucy, I think you're going to make some introductions.
Right, so we have some new future members of the Development Commission here tonight. Terms begin May 1st, but we asked our new members to join us tonight because this is a training session and it seemed important. So tonight we have Brooke Shore, Ben Rush, and Arthur Schulte. And we're bidding farewell to Randy Harrison after tonight, who has graciously agreed to go over to the Planning Policy Commission and take all his knowledge of how it appears on the ground to help us get the standards, improve the standards. And I don't know if the new commissioners want to say a few words about yourselves, or...
Sure.
Hi, I'm Arthur Schulte, MG2 Architecture and Adjunct Professor at LW Tech. Glad to be on the board and thank you for the opportunity to serve the community.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Ben Rush. I came from UVDC for a couple of years and now here and looking to contribute.
I'm Brooke Shore. I'm a civil engineer and I work for a general contractor in the area.
Thank you. So as you said, we're going to have a new cast of characters tonight because we're doing so much training. First, Emily Artesche from Long Range Planning is going to speak about the signs, and then another group of us will talk about the mock permit.
I'm a senior planner with the city of Issaquah. You may have remembered me from a few months ago when I came -- we actually invited you to a planning policy meeting regarding Gilman Boulevard and thresholds for levels of review in central Issaquah. And funny enough, I do have a slide presentation that brings us back to that moment in time where we were discussing those proposed amendments. But let me go from the start to introduce the topic of the sign code. I'm not sure if you were aware, but you did receive a memo in your packets, that the city initiated a sign update project this year. And the reason why we initiated the project was to address a recent, a fairly recent Supreme Court case, Reed versus Gilbert, which required the city to, all cities, to look at their sign codes again under the lens of free speech and areas where signs could potentially be in conflict with the Supreme Court's decision. At the same time, we knew that we have, we knew that we had, we still have, several sign codes. So we have the Issaquah Municipal Code Sign Code 1811, and we have a sign code in central Issaquah. We also have a sign code in Old Town, and we have multiple sign codes associated with developer agreements. Your review is in central, is in Issaquah Municipal Code under 1811, and it allows for two different types of review, an informal review and a formal review. Most recently, you've probably been experiencing more informal reviews than formal reviews. I'm going to highlight what those two are, those distinctions, and then go into the administration's proposed recommendation as we maneuver through a new sign code, merging these sign codes together and legalizing them and enhancing them for the purposes of the city's facilitation of sign permits. So this is the DC formal review. You're probably aware that it's regulating, I mean, the areas that you regulate are adjacent to major streets, and those streets, there are about 17 streets that are identified, and it includes areas of both central Issaquah and Old Town. You also have a formal area of review with regards to the CBD, that's Old Town. Property zoned, capital facility zones, and those are the city's facilities as well as any other properties that are adjacent to them. And then approved sign packages, which is a very limited review, mostly done when the city receives a change to an approved sign package. And then there's landmark signs, which I understand we have not actually designated any landmark signs at this point. Then there's a DC informal review, and this gives you the opportunity to waive a review when you feel like there's no need or there's sufficient information to allow for the administration to review it. You recently had two projects come forward with a waived review. One was for Fieldstone and one was for Sunrise, and those were monument signs. And essentially what happened there is that the information regarding the sign permit was sent to the chair and the vice chair, and then with a request from the administration to find out if those sign permit applications could essentially be waived. And when they are waived, the review changes and it's delegated to the planning director and/or manager. And in all cases, the permit still needs to meet all of the sign criteria and the regulations involved with the Issaquah Municipal Code. And just one caveat there is that this Issaquah Municipal Code was written at a time when the city didn't have these additional sign codes, sign codes in place. So if you recall, central Issaquah standard, design standards, development and design standards came into place in 2013. And yet there's still provisions for DC to review sign permits on major streets that fall within central Issaquah. You see how that, that's kind of juxtapositioned? And so for that reason, signs that fall into central Issaquah are regulated under central Issaquah's design standards, development and design standards, and they don't go to the Development Commission. So staff evaluated the DC informal review process, and what we observed is that the process has been working in this informal capacity pretty well. You know, we haven't had any complaints, complaints about it. And that we recognize that fewer sign applications are falling into the areas for, that require DC review. So just as I mentioned before, lots of these sign permits that are coming forward fall within the provisions of the central Issaquah standards. And for that reason, you haven't seen a lot of sign permit applications come forward. I think only two of the streets that are listed under major sign streets are outside of central. One or two are actually in Old Town and two are outside of central. So for that reason, you're getting a very small portion of all the sign permits that are coming forward. And at the same time, and here's where my reference back to thresholds of review, at the same time, there's probably going to be a greater demand on your time as higher thresholds for project reviews are expected to perk up within central Issaquah. And you may be wondering, what does that really mean? I don't know if you recall, and if you're able to see this map very well, but this is a map that I presented back in November to show you what Development Commission's potential level three reviews could entail. And so on this map, you'll see that there's a red line outlining central Issaquah, and there's a blue line which identifies 17 corridors. Well, the beige colored parcels are parcels that are greater than three acres, and the brown colored parcels are ones that are connected to those blue corridors. Both of those brown and beige colored properties are areas where there would be a level three review required. Now, of course, if you go back and look at the adopted standards that the council recently passed, you'll see that there's a provision that if a development comes in under 4,000 square feet, you wouldn't get the project review at that point. But looking at the map, do you see that there's just a handful of properties that don't have a color on it? And for that reason, those would be the properties that wouldn't be triggering a level three review and wouldn't come to you. And for that reason, the city expects that you'll probably see an uptick in a lot of new project reviews coming this year, and that your time is going to be well spent looking at complex development review projects and getting those vetted through the process. There may not be as much time to review things like sign permits. So the administration's recommendation is that staff review and prove throughout the city sign permits, and that the change would coincide with the review of the new sign code update project, which is expected to be adopted in 2020. Are there any questions? That's the end of my presentation.
I have one. When the staff review and approve, approval is done, made, I've lost the sense of the technical capacity of the staff. Do they include the engineer, for instance? There's a manual on uniform traffic control devices that is a requirement for different kinds of signs, and is that reviewed by the city engineer or something, or does the staff know that stuff?
The staff knows that stuff. Now, we, the review is primarily by the planner, but we do have engineers look at it to make sure that there are no utility conflicts, to look at site distance easements, to, if it's a monument sign or something that might need a structural review, we may even bring in a plans examiner. So we assign disciplines based on the implications and codes that need to be used in the review.
Okay. Well, I know there, I know there are warrants for stop signs and yield signs and all kinds of things like that. I'm just wanting to make sure that...
I'm sorry, I was answering for more like commercial signs. The MUCTD signs, yes, those are done by the engineer as part of a development project.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Other questions or comments, commissioners? This is your opportunity to ask anything you want about the recommendation.
Emily, in the code, I think you've mentioned 18.11 regarding signs.
Correct.
Just wanted, you're probably aware of it, there's also a mention of signs and Development Commission in 18.03.040. Be sure to catch that one.
Great, thank you.
So I have a question about the timeframe in terms of a review by chair and vice chair of a sign. How much time that takes staff, can it be done quickly, can be...
Through the informal process or the formal process?
Through the informal process.
I do not have a time estimate on how quickly the ones, for example, Fieldstone and Sunrise were done.
And we don't run into, like, media notice timeframes or things like that for those?
No.
It's all, right?
And that is a good point, that their sign permits would not, administrative review, staff review of sign permits does not have any noticing requirements.
Okay. Comments, too?
Comments, sure.
I guess we've reviewed a lot of signs, and I think they, I guess, I always feel like when we're here as Development Commissioners, we're the representatives of the city, of the citizens of the town, looking at what's being developed and put up in front of them. And I do think signs can have a fairly large impact on the public realm, on what people see on streets and how they feel about their town. I have total faith in the city staff to do a good review of things and so forth, but we have seen signs, I think, proposed in the past that I don't think we would have liked and did get changed. So I guess I'm hesitant to say remove the public input part of the process completely from the sign review, and perhaps typically a chair and a vice chair are somebody that have experience in the Development Commission with some projects that have come through, have seen things. I guess I still prefer at least the informal process, that if a chair and vice chair, if one of them said, wait a minute, this thing is really crazy, we think the whole commission should look at this and provide input, I would rather see that opportunity. And in most cases, they're probably going to say, I'm guessing, agree with staff, when they, if staff thinks it's a nice looking sign, I'm guessing the chair and vice chair would probably feel the same way. My preference would be to keep at least that portion of the process as a possibility, so...
Because recollection wise, we did change a recommendation by the staff, right, on the emergency, emergency room over on...
You're thinking of Highmark. That, that was, you weren't changing a recommendation by staff, you were clarifying an interpretation of how the sign package that was approved with the, with the land use permit and the current code, how those two fit together. The applicant and staff saw it differently, each interpreted it differently, and we decided to bring it back to the Development Commission because they had approved, you had approved the original sign package.
I have one kind of observation and/or question. Are there illuminated electronic reader signs allowed anywhere in the city of Issaquah by present code?
I love being tested. Yes, but only at schools at this time.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because with all the attention on distracted driving, as I've mentioned before, when this issue came up once, I just don't see the net benefit of having another distraction for people in traffic.
Right, yeah. It's been a big debate, and it was a big push by the schools just because of their ability to update information for the community, but it is, it is something that's tricky in trying to regulate that.
Good question. So is there, I mean, I'm the new person here, so maybe this is an easy answer, but is there a threshold at which things get questioned? Are there signs that automatically go through? Are there things that get put up for review, or how does that work?
So I'm going to let Emily answer the part of that, but central Issaquah and the urban villages like Issaquah Highlands and Talis, their signs have never come to the Development Commission. And it was, it started that just development agreements were excluded, and then when the provisions for central Issaquah got adopted, they used a similar approach as the urban villages. So I don't, off the top of my head, remember what the threshold is.
Well, are you looking for a code reference, or...
No, just do you know which signs in greater Issaquah are directed to the Development Commission? Is it monument signs?
Well, it's just based strictly on the streets that I indicated here, adjacent to major corridors. So your streets are Front Street, Sunset, Northwest Maple, Newport Way, Gilman, Northwest Semamish Road, East Lake Sam, Southeast 56th Street, Issaquah Falls City Road, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, those are the two ones that you recently waived, 228th, 43rd, West Lake Sam, and any street or street segment abutting that is generally parallel to Interstate 90. So again, most of those fall within the provisions of central Issaquah, which central Issaquah development and design standards would take precedence. And then any sign that comes into the city that's a modification of an existing sign or changed an existing sign would not go to Development Commission if it happened to fall outside of central Issaquah or outside the villages. So the area of review is, is pretty small.
Okay, but all those streets you listed off, Development Commission reviews all those, correct?
No.
If they're outside of central Issaquah.
So you're, yeah, out of the 17 that I just rattled off, I mean, you're, you're down to Issaquah Falls City Road, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, 228th, and Sunset Maple, Sunset and Front. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So what is your expectation from your presentation? Do you want us to make an agreement, make a motion or an amendment, or...
I just think we wanted to hear from the commissioners what their thoughts were on the proposed change, which I think we...
I think you did. Is that right?
Yeah.
You feel like you heard from the commission?
Yes, we heard from the commission. We didn't hear a group decision or a group's consensus, but...
Well, I can just add one thing. I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Morgan as to his suggestion.
So what's the consensus of the commission? What do you think would, would the involvement of the, at least the chair and the vice chair be acceptable to you?
Yes, to me, myself, Arthur Schulte, absolutely.
Richard?
If we can include language that chair and vice chair be consulted when issues regarding signs come before the staff, I think that would be a perfect solution, yeah.
I would agree.
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 It was your recommendation, so you probably...
I think so.
I think, I think that's consensus of opinion, that the chair and the vice chair would like to be involved in those, some of those decisions.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. So tonight, we're going to have kind of a three-person introduction to some of the things that have, that are new. So the, we're going to do it in a couple of parts. First, we're going to talk a little bit about what has come out of the moratorium and some of the changes or additional tools that are in place. And then we're going to use this mock permit as a way of sort of testing it. It's meant to be a very informal and interactive evening. So the moratorium began in September 2016 and ended in May 2018, and it was enacted to address these six things: architectural fit, urban design, vertical mixed use, affordable housing, parking, and district visions. Tonight, we're just focused on three of them. And architectural fit and urban design were combined into the Central Issaquah Architecture and Urban Design Manual. And then district visions was some modifications to the central Issaquah plan. I'm going to start with the design manual. Keith will talk about the district visions, and then our planning consultant, Katie Cody, has been working on the mock permit. But, you know, we'll all talk. So we call, it has that very long title, Central Issaquah Architecture and Urban Design Manual, but we just call it the design manual often, just because it's shorter. And it was adopted at the end of 2017 and became Chapter 18 of the Central Issaquah Standards. So I'm going to just give you a very quick overview. Many of you worked on the design manual, but some of you didn't, so this is a little bit of a refresher. The design manual divided central Issaquah into two districts. One was the urban core and the other was traditional Issaquah. The urban core has two styles, northwest contemporary and northwest revival. The traditional Issaquah has six styles, which are arts and crafts, craftsmen, northwest lodge, western false front, urban grange, and also northwest revival. So the thing I want to point out, and this is a little bit of what I want to do tonight, is point out some of the changes that took place after it left your good hands and care. And that was northwest revival was added, it was already, you had added it, but then it went to being applied in both districts. I think initially, it was just in traditional Issaquah. So the other part of the design manual is urban design. The first part was architecture. The urban design applies across all districts and all styles, and it covers both the natural and the built context in which a project's occurring as well as the actual site. So the natural context is additional design requirements in response to being near a natural element. And the map, this is the final map that was adopted by council. It is not regulatory, it's informational. There's a list of specific elements that trigger the natural context. The built context, most buildings are meant to harmonize, but civic and cultural buildings such as the library or the fire station are meant to stand out. In terms of site, there are four big categories: block size, block access, building edges, and usable open space. And then you can see there are some subsets of that. The thing that changed after, after the Development Commission's work was three new subsections were added. To natural context, we added a page on hillsides and slope sites, a page on site walls, and then to usable open space, we also added rooftop use. So I'm going to review those quickly. Feel free to ask questions. They don't apply tonight, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that those had been added. So hillsides and slope sites, the issues were the amount of disturbance. Well, let me just take a step back. There are not many hillside sites, but as you get to the edges of central Issaquah and start heading, some of the sites on the edges where we're heading off the valley floor are sloped. And so there was a concern that a lot of the provisions that were in central Issaquah were mainly for flat sites. And so some of the concerns was the amount of disturbance, the length and height of walls that were necessary for those sites, and how buildings responded to grade. So a hillside is, a lot of these regulations don't kick in unless you have 15% or greater slopes. When you have that, you're expected to grade no more than in 15-foot increments, so you can only cut in 15 feet and then you have to step. So the idea is that both the foundations and the rooftops step to follow the natural grades, which both blends the building in and reduces the amount of just ignoring the natural topography. Uphill sites, meaning if your road's here and your building is above it, you typically get to average the building height in the city. Uphill sites, it's just a max, whatever the height is allowed, it's just straight off the road, so that you are not, because when you average an uphill site, the building can be significantly taller. And there was a concern that threw the building out of scale to the road. Walls are limited to 10 feet in height, and if you need to go taller than 10 feet, then you need to terrace the walls. Landscape and, and then buildings, colors, materials, and addition of landscape to help it blend in.
Question, Lucy. The apartment project proposed on Newport Way near the storage facility and King Kind Library, it hasn't been built yet. Did you go back and curious and check to see would...
In terms of the building and the foundation stepping, no, it would not have complied with these new regulations.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Any more questions on this one? Walls, the issue was just the impact, the visual impact of walls and how they impacted sort of the creation of the public realm. There are two options for walls that are near pedestrian areas. One is either that they're limited to four feet in height, and then you can terrace back if you need to, or you set the wall back enough where you can have trees every 35 feet, and then the wall, the first wall can start at 10 feet. So there are those two options. Walls are, the design of the walls is meant to complement the architectural styles that were adopted through Central Issaquah, that there is pedestrian scale design and detailing, so you don't just have a smooth concrete wall with no detailing or maybe patterning. And that, when you get a wall that's longer than 35 feet, it needs to be either articulated or modulated. So you might break the wall up, or add piers, or other things that, again, minimize the sort of perceived length of the wall. Any questions on this one? Okay.
Lucy?
Yeah?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
When I was looking through this, when I was reading through it, I, one thing that kind of caught me, and I don't question the verbiage, but when we talk about attractive to pedestrians and so on, when I saw the second one there, the wooden wall, you know, frankly, my initial impression was, that's interesting, that's appropriate, and the one at the bottom isn't. And this is just...
The one down here?
Yeah, the, the, the one that's, the only one on there that's, it's the bottom one. And I know this is just a personal opinion, I'm going to get into aesthetics, but I, I don't recall the discussions that we had about the, about the definitions of the walls and what was appropriate and not. I know we spent some...
You didn't, you have not seen this page?
No, I know that, I'm talking about, we're talking to the design, the design man.
Oh, in projects.
Yeah. And I, I just have reservations about the designation of that type of wood wall being appropriate. And I'm not trying to revise anything, but I just keep thinking about that King County approval above Costco or Home Depot.
Right.
And kind of thinking, geez, you know, I know that was the city...
It's everybody's favorite wall in the city.
Yep, yep. Everybody, especially the people below it, I'm sure.
So, I think part of why, so, I'm not frankly a huge fan of soldier pile walls, that's what, this one that you're, just the wood one you're describing, this is the nicest soldier pile wall I've ever seen, which is by Timber Ridge. But I think part of what we wanted to acknowledge was that when you're transitioning to open space, that rockeries and these kind of wood walls may blend in and be a better transition to open space. So they're not intended to be in the, used in the middle of these urban projects, it's more where you're transitioning on the edges.
Sorry, Lucy, to pick up on that question, should we be commenting on the content of these pages right now? Is that part of the process that you wanted, or were you going to go through these and we were going to comment on the content before? Because I have another comment on one of those pictures. I'm not sure that it matches the current version of the SIDS.
So, there, Richard, you are my editor. So, two things. These are adopted. We worked with a graphic designer. We hired a graphic designer to help get this into a format and include all the checklists that you saw as part of this. The adopted version online had some of the pictures on the page here mixed up, and this is the correct version.
Thank you.
The one online is incorrect, and I had to email her and say, eh, don't yell too loud.
Yeah, I was thinking especially about the third row down, that left diamond, red diamond pattern. On one online, that's marked as inappropriate.
Right.
But here, yeah, okay.
This is the correct configuration. I caught that as I was putting this together for you, which, let us love that.
Lucy, I have a quick question. So, I'm thinking, and this is half answered by the Home Depot wall, so that's a King County thing, but the other wall I'm thinking of is going into the Highlands and Highlands Drive. There's a big wall there. So how does this, where's, again, a threshold between, is, what's a structural, like, wall that holds up, you know, area to be supported by housing and all that? And what is this, and how do they translate to each other?
So, this is, and that's, that's a good question, Ben, and it may be better when we have an actual project, but I'm going to do my best to explain it. This page is to talk about hillsides and slope sites. This page is to talk about both those walls, but also just site walls, because sometimes you put in a seat wall or something that is not retaining earth. When you look at the one going into Issaquah Highlands, if these regulations were in place, you could not build that wall. They would have probably had to start further down the hill and terrace them up in these 10-foot increments with planting beds in between, rather than building a single tall wall that took up the entire grade.
Okay. Thank you.
So, last new page was rooftops. And this one also has a picture that's wrong compared to the online version, I will admit to that right now. So, there was a thought that in the urban core, where both styles have flat roofs, that, and where if we are developing in the sort of manner that we're expecting, it's going to be more dense, more intense development, that we really need to be taking advantage of all the different kinds of spaces we have. We aren't thinking that rooftops would be open to the public, but that there should be opportunities for either tenants or residents of the building to be able to get to those spaces, and whether it might be on the roof itself, or it might be a terrace or balcony on an upper floor. And so, any use, any building in the urban core built under these regulations would need to provide that option. Landscape is optional. There was some desire to add landscape as a mandatory element, but there's a lot of tricky factors that come into play with putting landscape on the roof of buildings. And lastly, there was some concerns and questions when we were in front of the council about how the roof lines would appear with northwest contemporary. And so we changed out, well, we, I'm not sure we changed out, we added pictures to that page, which are the images that are shown down here, to better represent sort of modern contemporary cornice lines, both appropriate and inappropriate.
Question on that. So, in the urban core, we can have northwest contemporary and northwest revival, right?
Yes.
So northwest contemporary does not always have flat roof, right?
You're right. In some instances, it might not, which would then, you're right. But then you would have the balcony or terrace option at the upper levels.
Okay, so then, the rooftop use would only be required for northwest contemporary that does have flat roof?
No, because balconies and terraces can happen on those upper levels. And so, I'm, it's coming back to me now, that, that that was part of the advantage of having that as an upper level, not a rooftop option, but an upper level option to provide access to people to the views and opportunities at the upper floor.
Just so that's clear, when I first read the description right there, it says both allowed, have flat roofs, and therefore, this would be required, so it wasn't really clear what that meant.
Right. You're right. But you are right, we do have images of northwest contemporary with sloped roofs.
And I'm still, I guess, confused on language too, because it, which says, "For buildings in urban core, rooftops must include active uses." So did you say there could be just landscape, or?
No.
There could be landscape with it.
Yes.
But there has to be an active use on the roof.
Either on the roof, if it was flat, or if they chose not to use the roof. They could, on the upper levels, have balconies or terraces that were accessible to building tenants or residents as an alternative.
Individual tenants or...
Not, no, not just, I'm sorry, I'm not explaining this very clearly, not just to, like, to a specific unit, but that you might have a community room at that level that had an outdoor component, like a terrace or a balcony, that gave everyone in the building access to that, that view and that sort of being on an upper level.
Right. And then is there a minimum outdoor portion of that that you would require?
There are minimum dimensions. I believe that it had to be, I'm doing this from memory, I believe it had to be eight feet deep if you're for the balcony or terrace.
Right, it is eight feet?
Okay.
Lucy, out of curiosity, was there ever discussion regarding noise? You know, would there be a noise ordinance, or is that simply just, you know, up to the building operations to figure that out?
I think it would be building operations in, you know, there, I mean, that's an interesting question. We did not put any, for instance, hour restrictions. There have been some buildings in Issaquah that have been built with rooftop use, and we have not gotten any complaints, and I assume that's either because they have very well-behaved tenants, or the building management has set, you know, the necessary rules, but that is a good question.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
One more. Let's see. Could we go back to page 11, which is the roof, or are you still going on this set?
I'm sorry?
Page 11 of 65, which is the one regarding the roof, new pages regarding roof. Are you covering that at all, or will that be...
I thought I just did. Is there something on that page?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this will be a go-back, I missed one in there.
Yes?
Right, so, on page 11 of 65, the, is, that's a new image down there at the bottom, right, that's inappropriate on the left at the bottom?
Yes.
That's basically, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, so, I, frankly, I reused my PowerPoint from the one that we used when we were getting this through council. This is the same image, it's just a much smaller snippet of the one that's in the lower left-hand corner of the page. This is the northwest contemporary, so those, is what I'm saying makes sense, Richard?
Right, right. The lower-left one, I think that and the borders are both new images, right, at the bottom of that page?
Actually, and the one above borders.
Okay. So just the inappropriate one to the left there, you know, it references that there's no cornice or similar element as present. And I didn't see any reference to cornice in the description or inappropriate, I didn't know that it was required there.
I don't have my manual in front of me, so, hold on a second.
Yeah, I agree.
I believe, so I'm doing this again from memory, I believe that... So, I believe that the cornice comes up under massing and style, I mean, massing and scale, rather than under roof line. And that was kind of an interesting piece of all of this, that the, it was where to demonstrate that characteristic from the manual, and we decided that because it was related to the roof and how the roof appeared, that, that we would put it there rather than under massing and scale. Does that make sense?
Right, I'm just wondering if that should be called out in either the description or appropriate, to say that roofs should have cornice structures or similar. In other words, there's a deficit there, but I don't see where it was called out as a requirement.
Sorry, I don't have something I can grab here to just drag along.
Am I making sense in my question here?
So, under massing, oh, why isn't there anything on the screen? I'm not, I'm not in PowerPoint, I don't understand what we're looking at, we're not seeing the screen up there.
We're looking at the city of Issaquah.
Yeah, no, I, I can see what you're seeing, it's not what I'm seeing. That's really, we need to figure that out, because it's going to be a problem for your presentation as well.
Is it PowerPoint, I think, or PDF?
I don't know. So, let me just say to you, imagine, if you will, under massing, it says appropriate is cornice hierarchy, if using more than one cornice, the uppermost roof line displays the most prominent cornice. So, and then it says, "Flat roof shall display a cornice or similar element designed with depth and detail." So, it's, that's what I meant by, it's pulling, unlike the other styles where everything is kind of self-contained within each of those components, for northwest revival, it's pulling from both massing and scaled into the roofs, and that's why we put the images there.
Okay.
So I believe, I mean, what I'm saying is, I don't think we have to add language under roofs, because it is a requirement under massing, it's just illustrated with roofs.
Right, and so these images were better under roof than under massing, then? Is that the decision that was made?
Right, the page, if you could see it, you would see that it's already pretty full, and so we just felt that it, it related to roofs, and therefore, it, we could use both pages to capture the information.
Thank you.
Well, that's interesting, that's...
Should we try and close that tab?
Which tab?
The one that you're in, on the screen, not on the back screen.
Okay. Well, let's see, I did, that, so that's when I used the power, the F5 thing, so I'll close it all out when I'm done. Okay, there's rooftops. So monitoring, there was an interest in not finding ourselves back where we were with some of the issues that had driven the moratorium, and that we have regular predictable check-ins, and so monitoring is required every three years or every three land use permits. And the checklist, I just wanted, I mean, I know you've seen it, but I just want to talk about it for a moment, because this was really driven by your desire to really look at each component on each relevant page, to understand how staff had evaluated it, and whether you would agree with that evaluation. So, I worked with the graphic designer, and you can see that we've gone to a legal size page for the checklist. What that does is it gives us the space down at the bottom, which you can't see my mouse moving. So down at the bottom, you can see there's staff comment and staff proposed conditions. So that's a place where staff can put their interpretations and proposed conditions, so that you can see them and understand if we've made interpretations or combined things. The checkboxes at the top that are with objective and description are not meant to be a summary of the entire page. be a summary of the entire page, but simply respond to, are they complying with the objectives and the description? And then each element of appropriate and inappropriate has its own checkbox. They are continuously lettered to make it easy for staff to just refer to them up above, I mean, or down below when they're writing the comments. Are you finding them?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I, I just wanted to give you a moment to get there, because I don't know how visible it is up on screen. Any questions about this part of the? Any questions overall? Okay. Now, we will have a technical moment, where we'll try and escape whatever purgatory we've gone into, and then Keith will talk about the changes to the central Issaquah plan. So, what are you suggesting? Nothing's coming up. That's again, because you did.
We're in a funky, we're in a funky, I'm just gonna go.
Yeah.
Good evening Development Commission. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Keith Niven, and I'm Director of Economic Development and Development Services for the city. I'm going to start with an apology. When we adopted, or when we moved through the Architectural Manual, we promised you we'd bring back a mock permit, so that we could try out the new toy that we had just gotten. And unfortunately, it took us this long to get to you, so my apologies for the delay. Lucy went through the Architectural and Urban Design Manual, I'm going to quickly go through one of the other changes to central Issaquah, which is another new tool for you guys to use when you get permit applications. So, one of the, one of the, when, when the moratorium came into effect, one of the concerns that the city council had was that the description of central Issaquah was fairly homogeneous through the entire thousand acres. And even though the central Issaquah was divided into sub-districts, there was an expectation of mixed use everywhere, just to be very kind of blunt with that. And what had happened is, and do I get a mouse? Ah, I do get a mouse. It moved, I saw something move. Anyway, oh, there we go, sweet. All right, so the area, the very western portion of, of central Issaquah, basically think about Newport Road west of SR 900. What had happened since the plan got adopted is most of the vacant properties had come under permit, and most of them are under construction right now, and all the projects that were, that had come through were residential. And so, one of the questions the council asked was, if there's this expectation for mixed use, then how come we didn't get mixed use in one whole area of central Issaquah? And so, they asked us to go back and look at the sub-districts, to go back and look at the vision for the entire sub-area, and to kind of think about it a little bit more finer-grained. And so, we started kind of a process with Planning Policy Commission, which included kind of driving around and talking about the different parts of central Issaquah. And what it resulted in was shrinking down the number of what were called sub-districts, and we now are calling them neighborhoods. So, now we've identified basically five different neighborhoods in central Issaquah. So, within the sub-area, there's now five areas that we're wanting to distinguish. And the reason why we came up with those different neighborhoods was based on existing land uses, expected land uses, whether they were part of the Regional Growth Center or not. And as we talk about the mock permit tonight, one of the things that you should consider is, is it meeting the neighborhood vision for the neighborhood within which it's located? So, we, we kind of went through this process of creating more clarity and more differentiation within central Issaquah based on geography. And, you know, what came after that was, you know, how are you going to assure that you're going to get the things that you think you're going to get? And one of the things that we did, even though this is basically a sub-area plan, part of the comprehensive plan, is we created developer obligations. So, there's a page for each neighborhood, so for each neighborhood, there's basically a summary of what we expect that neighborhood to develop like and evolve into. But then there's a piece on developer obligations, there's a piece on city actions, things that we think the city needs to do to make this neighborhood whole. And then, basically, there's measures for success. And we went through that with Planning Policy Commission, and ultimately, that got adopted as an amendment to the sub-area plan. So, so as we go through this tonight, these are the developer obligations for the Confluence neighborhood. So, as Katie presents her proposal as an applicant, you know, you guys should be thinking about the Architecture and Urban Design Manual that Lucy kind of walked you guys through, the high points of. And then you should also be thinking about, this is in a particular neighborhood within central Issaquah, and this area, and the area is basically Seventh and Locust outside, you know, that's a very different part of Issaquah than, say, you know, over by Fred Meyer, which we call the Eastlake neighborhood, or, you know, Gilman or Pickering, which is basically the Regional Growth Center. This part of central Issaquah has a very different feel about it. And the idea when we came up with kind of this structure was, we would like whatever development happens in that neighborhood to be cognizant of this kind of feeling and expectation for this area. So, as we go through the mock permit tonight, there will be a list of things that this permit will need to do. So, consider these like design guidelines, all right? So, they're not, they're not, they are code, they have to do these, these aren't, these aren't discretionary, these are shall do's. But how you accomplish these, there's some flexibility in how you accomplish them, because they're applied neighborhood-wide, right? And so, you know, as you look at things like provide non-motorized connections to facilitate public access to transit on Newport Way and Gilman Boulevard, how you accomplish that could be done in a number of different ways, and depending on where the property is, there may be different solutions to achieving that obligation. And so, part of this is thinking about how the developer addresses each one of these, they can't just ignore them unless it doesn't apply. Some of these may not apply to a particular parcel within the neighborhood, and that'll be kind of the evaluation process we're going to have to go through as we evaluate these proposals as they come through. So, again, another tool for you guys, hopefully makes sense. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to help, otherwise, I'm going to sit here and watch Katie do her presentation, and then I might join in on the discussion later, because I don't keep my mouth shut very well. And are you on PowerPoint too? It's a PDF, so this is, which one do you want, that one?
Nope. Maybe I need to call Wes.
Maybe if I go to full screen, I may get one. I think that it's just, it's thinking that it's, if you drag it, I think it was doing two screens.
Oh, I think we're good.
I might, I might bring it back, though, and then do it a different way. Okay. Yeah, it's doing the double monitor thing, so I think I'll just go with this. Okay, hello, I'm Katie Cody, and I've been working with Development Services for about six months as a planning consultant, and I'm helping with a couple different project reviews. You'll see me again next week when we talk about another, an SDP application. And then I've been working on this mock development project. So, one second here. So, my disclaimer is that I'm a planner and not an architect, so the, the plan set that you got is a little bit rudimentary, but thank you for rolling with it. Okay, so I think we've gone through most of this already, but the, the goal tonight is to look at a fake project, this is not real in any way, and use it as an opportunity to practice and ask questions. You can feel free to question my choices as a developer, as an applicant, and as a planner, so the floor is open. Again, here's the developer obligations Keith just mentioned. We are going to talk about the Design Manual checklists, and here we go. So, the project I, or the site that I chose is on Locust Street down across from the Atlas Project, and it's just about an acre site, and it's a square site, and it's located on a, an urban street that's straight and easy to build on, I thought. It is located by a city-owned property to the south, as I said, Atlas is to the north, and the Salmon Bay Park is nearby as well. It's zoned mixed-use residential, and as we already discussed, it's in the Confluence neighborhood. So, here's the project site. The proposal is a mixed-use residential commercial building with 36 units, two-bedroom units, 40 spaces of parking that will be on the ground floor under the, under the residential units, not, not underground parking, but surface level within the building. And there will be frontage improvements to Locust, and then a through-block passage on the west side. Here is the first-floor plan. The outline is not showing up very well, but your packet would have it more clearly. The commercial units are up in the front, and then that's the layout of the parking. The loading and trash and bike, bike parking are also inside there.
You can kind of follow along, she's up to page 36 in your packet.
This is the rough upper-level floor plans. There's going to be a rec room in the front part of the building where there's shared laundry facilities and kind of loungy things, stairwells and elevator shafts, and then that's the unit makeup. And it's not very clear from my drawings, but the idea is that on the ground floor, this is, the building fills the whole footprint, and on the upper two levels, it's sort of a U-shaped building with the middle portion open. And here's the front, the drawing is kind of a little sketchy, but again, look in your packets. I chose to apply the Western false-front architectural style, since this site is in the traditional Issaquah district, and it's, has a, has a ground-floor retail, and then the residences above, and the entrance to the parking garage is on the far-left side of the building, so the opposite side from the through-block passage.
Can I, can we jump in, is that okay, while you're doing this?
Sure, go ahead.
I guess a couple of comments I had on this were the, on some of these things where it says allowed, required, like floor area ratio, where it says base 1.25, I'm presuming that's a 1.25 minimum we have, or 1.25 maximum?
For floor area ratio, that's a maximum. So, for the, the base and max, there's, you have, you, the maximum is 1.25. If you provide a density bonus through, is it payment into affordable housing or other mitigation funds, then you can go up to two.
So, that's a great question. You haven't seen many projects that fall into this. Some zoning districts in central Issaquah, there is a minimum. Some sites of a certain size have a minimum. A site of one acre in this part of central Issaquah does not have a minimum FAR. Base means that if you are below that, you are not triggering the density bonus provisions, which is actually either FAR or height. But if you go above the base, you can go between the base and the max if you either, in residential, build affordable housing and pay in, or various criteria.
And so, I, I think my main point then is, in all of these, to make sure we specify in the chart what it is. So, like, was the floor area ratio base 1.25? So, if it's a floor area maximum ratio, or a floor area minimum ratio, that we state that. And the other things like the setbacks, where it says seven feet, it's a seven-foot maximum, those kind of things, to make that clear, so.
Thank you, that's a good comment.
And I did notice compared to the package, I think the package on the proposed, you did point out the actual 1.22 must be combined.
Yeah, there.
Package, we had those separated.
For commercial and residential, yeah, I simplified the chart a little bit.
But we didn't know from reading it whether it would have mattered or not.
Yeah. And you may, if you dig too deep into my pro forma, there's not a lot there, so I've, I've thought through most of the details, but, but it's not a super detailed project, just because of the mock permit nature of things, but yeah, that's a good comment.
And then, I guess the other question would be, if this came to us like this, where it said impervious, approximately 80%?
Yeah.
I'm presuming we would have to have it.
You probably would want things to be a little bit more precise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approximately, or less than, or whatever, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I would also note that, lost train of thought, what was I going to say? It'll come back to me. Oh, I remember now. So, I, I played with the idea of trying to max out the FAR, just to see what the biggest building could be on this site, and in the end, I decided to go back down, because parking became the limiting factor. Even though parking is not included in FAR calculation, just fitting the amount of parking within the building footprint, because I was, I was advised to avoid subterranean parking, so fitting that, the amount of parking into the footprint, limited me to about 40 spaces. So, that's why I didn't go all the way up. I think I, if I would have maxed out at two, we probably could have had another story, and it could have been up to 50 units, but there just was not enough space to park that many cars, and also meet the 80% impervious surface requirement.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Floor area, floor area ratio, so the way I understand it, it was built entirely to 1.0, is that correct?
Yes, so if the whole footprint of the site were built one story, that would be an FAR of one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in this case, a 1.25, how does the 2.5 come in, just because they're not using the entire lot, they're going up a few stories?
Yeah, let me go back to the site plan. So, the green is the property line, and the orange box is the footprint of the building. And then, so, so that itself already is below one. Then the definition of gross floor area in the code excludes all structured parking, so the whole first floor doesn't count at all. And then, the front, the commercial spaces, I guess not the whole first floor, but the parking floor doesn't count, the, the commercial spaces and lobby count. And then the residential units in that U shape on both floors count. And so, all of that space added together is 1.25, is a 1.25, or 1.22 floor area ratio.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, related question, so is it four-story or three-story building?
It's three.
Okay, I think originally, on the original page, it says four-story, and in the beginning of the description in a proposal, it says four.
That was, that was an old description, when I had not chopped the top floor off yet, sorry about that.
And the parking is at grade, then, it's not below grade, right?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see, so I'll get into a little bit more of the details. So, this is, again, the site and its surrounding area, oops, I'm going the wrong way. Here we go, so the circulation design matches the through-block passage with the through-block passage across the street. across the street in the Atlas Project. It would then dead-end at the end of this, of the property. However, the city owns the property directly to the south, so there's potential opportunities later for continuing that through-block to the city-owned property.
I have a question about the, if this really came through this way, we would be setting up, it seems like, a passage route that could eventually go from Atlas through this project and further south, that would have an intentional area where people would cross the street. So, would this require, I think we would require that there be a crosswalk, and that it be, you know, pedestrian-activated, or?
So-
What do we think we would do if this came up?
So, this is probably more about views and vistas than it is about circulation. So, in the views and vistas, where we have circulation facilities, we have to continue the sightlines of those circulation facilities to allow, to retain our sightlines to our hillsides. We didn't specify whether circulation facilities were vehicular or pedestrian. So, I had been, I have actually been thinking about this a lot since Atlas, and what would happen with this site. So, when Katie picked this site, it was actually an interesting opportunity, and we, you know, if you, if you go to Google Street View, or bold enough to actually go on-site, and stand on Gilman, and look down the side of Atlas through the through-block passage, you will see the hillside. And so, I said, you know, this seems like a good opportunity to sort of think about what the implications are of this. Because I don't know that we really meant through-block passages, but we didn't specify when we wrote that views and vistas. And so, I think that people might choose to make that crossing. You would not necessarily mark all of those. But I think we were thinking about this more serving the individual projects or the individual block in terms of a circulation facility, but more importantly, preserving sightlines down circulation facilities.
That makes sense.
So, can I add, Lucy? So, but to your question, Commissioner, if this was a real application, we would have routed this to Public Works Engineering, and Public Works Engineering would have indicated to us how they would want that crossing addressed. So, whether there was a painted crosswalk, or nothing, or, you know, RRFBs, which are the things like we have out here, where you push the button and the lights go off. There's a lot of choices. And, you know, it's, a lot of it depends on visibility and volume of traffic on Locust. All that would play into, I think, the ultimate outcome.
Great. Thank you. And then, the other question I had about this, if it was private property to the south, would we require a through-block passage nowhere? Sorry, not to nowhere, but-
Yeah. No, I mean, think about Vale across the street. We put a through-block passage that goes to Aegis, and at some point when, and it just, it goes to, alongside the building, and we've preserved the easement. And if Aegis redevelops, then we would continue that through-block passage, and that project would take it into consideration. It's, you know, the challenge of incremental redevelopment.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, and then, the motorized routes onto the site are the red line. That's showing the entrance to the parking garage. And then, the little arrow, the little blue arrow is showing access to the plaza that's proposed at the front of the building. Again, this is the landscape plan roughly showing that trees will be replaced, that will be, trees that will be removed are being replaced around the edge of the property and at the street. And then that little, this is our forecourt community space, and that will be publicly accessible from the sidewalk and from the through-block passage.
Katie, excuse me, can you go back to the overview of the site?
The foot- This one?
Yeah. Or, one more, the aerial photograph? There we go. Can you tell me where the nearest mass transit stop is to the site? So, people that are renting, these are going to be apartments, right? Not condos?
To be determined.
Okay. Well, either, either way, how would people access mass transit from this site?
You'd have to walk to Gilman or Newport.
Gilman and Newport?
Gilman or Newport.
Yeah. Well, that's my, I, I think there's, we talked on the Atlas application and the Lofts application, we talked about where the bus stop was going to be in both directions, and it was actually going to be moved, I thought. That's the point of my question.
So, that's a very interesting point. The bus stop with the Lofts was part of the development agreement-
Right.
-that we would, that they would explore moving it. With Atlas, they wanted to negotiate moving the bus stop and worked with Metro to relocate it.
Okay.
That's a really unusual thing. I mean, I think that may be the only times in my 20 years in Isaguas that I've seen that kind of thing happen.
That a developer would ask to work with King County?
Well, they're welcome to work with King County, but we don't usually mandate it, because, you know, everyone would like to have a bus stop with their project, and there's a lot of regulations. For Atlas, it was that they, it was on one side of an intersection, and they wanted it on the other side, which is consistent with where Metro's putting things stops now. But if there are no bus routes near the project, we probably would not be asking them to design something.
Well, I wasn't specifically thinking about that. I just wanted, I know that we're trying to get more and more people to walk and take mass transit. So, my question was, how realistic is it to expect the residents of this, of this project to avail themselves of mass transit in the winter? I mean, how much of a hike is it to the nearest bus stop? I guess that's my, that's my question.
And why are you, and what's?
Well, at some point, you mentioned Aegis being redeveloped. So, at some point, I assume it's going to fill in, and it's going to be multifamily with real estate. So, we're going to get more and more people living on the same thing. And the encouragement is to try to get them to take mass transit, not to drive. And, and so, I'm trying to envision this project going in, the nearest bus stop being where, where people that want to go to Seattle to work can avail themselves of mass transit. And then, how, what the, when, when more and more people are concentrated there, they're, as I understand it now, they're getting further away to the, to the south from Gilman Boulevard, which is where I think the main bus stops are at present. So, that, that was my question, that, how do we accommodate, if this is getting to the point, I assume, where people are going to look out the window and say, not today, that, that the bus, the King County, that we work with King County, to, to move the mass transit capabilities based on population shifting, or whatever it is?
I would think that it would take more than a project like this.
I, I agree.
You know, it's, it's a dance. Metro has their metrics that they require. I mean, when Gateway and REVA and Gateway Senior are open, they may be restoring bus service to Newport. We don't know that for sure.
Is that something that the city would really like to get more clarity on, or bring more pressure to bear?
Oh, we talked to, there is regular communication and meetings on that. I mean, partly because we have the 200 service-
Yeah.
-which we, we pay for. The city pays for it to have. So, you know, we've made changes to the 200 service, thinking about how, where it's the most effective routes to use the minutes that we have. They're trying, Metro is trying a call, a reservation system up at Isaguas Highlands, where there are fixed, like four or six fixed stops, and you have to have made a reservation in advance in the peak hours, in the morning, the afternoon. I mean, there, there are different things that are coming along as there's more density, but it isn't something where it, it's not a straight, easy formula to understand-
Oh, I can imagine, yeah.
...when those things happen.
I just wondered if, how much of it, how much of it is proactive, anticipating, or reactive, which is-
More, I think it's more reactive. And then, the other thing is what their walk distance is.
Yeah.
For instance, I live in Seattle, and near, between two sound transit stations that are going to open in the next year or two, and they, I'm a 10-minute walk, and they don't consider my house being served by the transit stations, which I think is crazy. They're saying a five-minute walk. So, I, I don't quite understand how some, I mean, that's, that's the city of Seattle.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
I do have one quick question on this. Apologies, I'm still kind of getting acquainted with the through-passage and the definition of that. But hypothetically, if that through-passage between Atlas and then the other apartment complex was at an angle, would we have to maintain an angled through-passage on this project site as well? Because right now, it's just north-south. But say that was at a 45-degree, if that parcel was angled, would we have to maintain that angle on this project site? So, as a result, possibly create two separate buildings?
Possibly. I mean, we're still, that's why I was describing it the way I was to the commission, because this is the first time we're sort of seeing something that isn't a street that is coming into play.
That's kind of an interesting question, because at the same time, we're driving toward a block orientation, right? More rectangular and less odd-shaped lots, grid.
Right.
Are you ready to go on? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go through the developer obligations now, and, and I wanted to do this more as a, kind of a teaching workshopping tool, rather than just going through the standards for this, for the mock development permit. So, you could see how, you've seen in the staff report how I presented it. This is the first time you will have seen this in a staff report. So, I want to know if that's a helpful way to present it, or if there's other ways that could be more helpful. Okay, so, for livable, there's, I'm going to go back there, oh, I don't have it. So, there are five different vision themes, is that right? Four, five? Livable, distinct, sustainable, anyway.
Connected.
Connected, thank you. So, for the Confluence neighborhood, there are three items in livable. And the two that I've highlighted in yellow, those are, those are requirements that go beyond what the central Isaguas standards require. So, those are kind of extra. They're code in addition to what's otherwise required. The number one about providing amenities that invite social opportunity, that's, that is also incorporated into some of the design standards. So, this project has the forecourt plaza at the, at the front of it to encourage pedestrians to come and sit. There's a through-block passage that's also open to the public, so we would say that this complies with that developer, developer objective. Enhance the variety of housing choices. This one has two-bedroom units, which I'm basing my experience on Seattle experience, but I think that more typically these days, smaller units are being built. So, I thought I would mix things up by building larger units. And so, that would comply with this objective. And then, the third one, provide wayfinding for local and regional trail users, supported by the city's wayfinding plan. So, this project is located close to a regional trail. I'm going to zoom back here to show you, right here. And I am blanking on the name of this trail. Is it the-
Juniper.
Juniper Trail, thank you. So, it's close to the Juniper Trail, and the proposal did not include signage. So, it's going to be conditioned that, that the project plan would have wayfinding markers either at the through-block passage, or at the corners of the property that would direct pedestrians to the Juniper Trail. Any questions on, on these?
All right, what was the meaning of the highlighting, then?
So, this was, I'm trying, I was trying to distinguish that some of the developer obligations are similar to requirements that are made in other places of the code. For example, the first one about amenities, there are lots of, there's a chapter in the central Isaguas standards about community space and amenities. So, those kind of mirror each other. But the other two, variety of housing choices, that's an example of a standard that doesn't show up anywhere else. So, that would be unique as an, as, as developer obligation. I don't know if it's unique to this neighborhood, but that would have been the only place where it would show up. And same with the wayfinding tools, although there are some, some signage requirements other places in code.
I'm seeing some raised eyebrows.
I'm wondering if we need that, or if we, that is going to be explained, you know, in the checklist, so people understand that?
The highlighting was not in the staff report.
If there are others like this, would we be bound for other kinds of highlighting? I wonder if we really need that distinction.
So, you might look at pages 20 and 21 in your packet, because as Katie kind of briefly mentioned, what she's showing on the screen is not what you received. This is the educational sort of piece of it, to help you understand that some parts of the developer obligations complement things that are in the development standards, central Isaguas standards. And then, the two pieces she highlighted don't really have specific code provisions in the Isaguas, central Isaguas standards. And so, these obligations, the only way we're going to get them is through this developer obligation, at least at this time. And so, you can see on pages 20 and 21, the way she went through them from a staff report, staff report perspective. This is the educational sort of complementary piece of that.
That helps.
Does that make more sense?
So, we wouldn't necessarily see this in a board or in a checklist form or anything.
Exactly.
Can I follow up on that question? So, it's done administratively. You make recommendations and identify the developer obligations. You put them in front of us, and we approve them?
Well, this will be similar to the other standards that, that the staff report will address. This will be included in the staff report. So, it's required in order to get the permit approved. So, you would be, if you didn't feel like a developer had met the obligation, then we would need to talk about that, and maybe add a condition.
Okay.
So, you remember the, the chart that Keith had up on the screen? That had livable, whatever, connected, and sustainable?
Here, this is the-
So, the, the part that she, oh, thank you. So, the parts that she's reading are inside that dashed box. And those, those specific words, if they were not there, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So, we're not coming up with developer obligations that are unique to each project. We're looking at each project within the developer obligations that were identified to implement the character of that particular neighborhood.
So, they're performance-based?
Yes. They're performance standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, distinctive, there is only one, and it concerns connection to Isaguas Creek. And this site does not connect directly or very easily indirectly to Isaguas Creek. So, I determined that it does not apply. Now, there are frontage improvements going in the sidewalk, so there will be improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure to help people who may be walking off-site. But that's the extent of this one. Okay, so, connected, this one, again, was not, the first one, provide non-motorized connections to facilitate public access to transit on Newport Way and Gilman Boulevard. Beyond the sidewalk improvements, that wasn't applicable to this project.
I have a question about that. I think during the, if I remember right, during the discussion about this requirement at like planning policy in the city, that there was some discussion about, even if you're not on Newport Way or Gilman, there can still be requirements, and I think, Keith, you touched on this sort of, that it wouldn't necessarily just be not applicable, because there's always something you can do to help facilitate, facilitate access to transit. So, even, I guess, even if it's just creating sidewalks that connect to other sidewalks that connect to Gilman, maybe that would be considered something we should bring out.
So, rather than saying that it's not applicable, it is applicable because we're improving the sidewalk network.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought I remember from those discussions about this requirement originally, so.
And it could even be in, in the form of signage. I mean, I don't see any reason why, when you're having a multi-family development with signs to Juniper Trail this way and so on, where you couldn't say, you know, mass transit bus stop that way. And have that be part of every building that's got, that's got multifamily, is part of the, part of the suggestion.
So, part of the way any of this is going to work, and I think you kind of went there earlier, Randy, and I'll take you back there, because I agree, so if we're going to get people to ride transit, and they're not on, you know, a transit route right now, then you have to facilitate their access to those locations, right? And so, part of what 3.1 is, is, you know, let's assume Atlas was not there, or, you know, it is there, and there is a through-block connection, so facilitating crossing there versus having to go over to Seventh and Up makes it more direct, right? And if you want people to walk, you give them choices, and you make it as easy for them to get there as possible. So, I would have probably, and this isn't being critical of Katie, I would probably have said, "It complies, and here's why we think it complies." Also, likewise, as far as the connection to Newport and transit on Newport, you know, this will, with the wayfinding signs, I think, point you over to the Juniper Trail, which then works your way down to get to Newport in a safe and hopefully pleasant way. You know, and, you know, this could also even evolve into a conversation on this particular project for the trail that runs south of Safeway. Is that still the Juniper Trail?
Yeah.
Holy cow, okay. You know, I mean, that is actually the fastest way to get to the park-and-ride on 900, right? And so, you know, there could be some wayfinding that way that says, you know, park-and-ride garage, you know, half a mile. Okay, that helps people get places. It makes them think, "Oh, it's only a half-mile, I can do that in 10 minutes, 5 minutes."
It might be worth thinking about a radius of, you know, a half a mile, if transit's within this, you know, such a radius distance to encourage a developer to look, you know, not just right outside your front door, but within a three-block or a five-block or whatever radius. We could think about that as, as staff during pre-application conferences, for example. Talk, talk through that. All right, so, provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, including the through-block passages, year-round outdoor seating opportunities, and transit stops. So, for this one, the building, you can flip back to the elevations, it might be easier to see, has, does have a canopy on the front along the sidewalk, and then also along the through-block passage, and there's some covered areas for seating at the plaza.
We talked, we've talked in several previous meetings, particularly those that had to do with, with Gilman, about the transit stops, and I'm glad to see that, because I think the spirit of the, of the DC was that we should work as aggressively as possible with King County again, to make every bus stop, particularly the ones that are around multifamily buildings, be, have some form of cover. So, I was glad to see that included in there as, as the desirable status for those going forward. I think that'd be significant, personally.
And I, I am showing a condition here, so it must be that a portion of the plaza's not covered, that I was conditioning that that needed to be covered. Okay, sustainable.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One other question, but that was something else that also came up in terms of permanent outdoor seating and the requirement to have it covered. I can't remember if the obligation says that all permanent outdoor seating has to be covered, because there's question, would it be permanent versus some could be temporary outdoor seating?
So, are you thinking that was one of the developer obligations?
I thought there was something in that discussion about whether it had to be if it was permanent or not.
So, I hope I'm demonstrating that this is a training for me as well. So, I don't think that, that may very well be true, it just may be for a different neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, I don't remember seeing it in here, so it may have.
It says that it should be.
You'll see when we get into the design manual, that there's also weather protection standards there that talk about covering seating, so.
So, there it is, right there, Mel. So, now, we've got some of the maybe less clear language that I authored. So, okay, provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, and I'm going to skip the parentheses, comma, year-round outdoor seating opportunities, comma, and transit stops. All right, so now, we get some discretion, what does that mean, right? So, does that mean it's completely weather-protected covering for outdoor seating? Now, part of it is because those configurations can dimensionally look a lot different, right? They may be linear if they're running along in the front of a building, they may be more square, as Katie has provided in this application. So, as we think about weather protection, you know, what would it look like to cover that entire plaza with weather protection, and is that the end game that we would want with this application? I think there's discretion. So, as Kevin brought up earlier, these are performance-based, which means we get to talk about what satisfies the expectation here, and there's some room for discretion. So, this isn't, this isn't numeric, this is about, what does it feel like, what does it look like? And it could very well be that extending a canopy over that entire plaza might make the plaza dark, it might make it, you know, it's going to, it's going to affect the plaza. So, we would talk, I would assume we would talk about that quite a bit, as we talk about what's the right amount of weather protection for that seating area.
Yeah, and Keith, I'm really glad you, that this came up, because now that I look at it, it occurs to me that weather protection is great for bus stops, because that's going to encourage people to go there. The outdoor seating opportunities, in, in my opinion, people are not going to go outdoor and seat themselves unless there's sunshine, frankly.
Or they need the smoking break.
Well, yeah, it's someplace where I can smoke a cigar, but, 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 but the way that's worded now, it seems to me that it is kind of all-inclusive, and I'm not sure that, that people are going to use outdoor seating if the weather is inclement, as opposed to a bus stop, or some of these other ones, we were talking about that. So, I, it, that, when I read that at first, I just rode over it, but that sounds kind of mandatory to me.
So, so, part of it, I think, and then I don't want, I, I agree with a lot of what you said, Randy, I think part of this is, it's going to, a lot of it's going to depend on the facing of the plaza, right? So, this one is going to have, it's not going to have southern sun, because it's on the north side of the building, right? It might get some western exposure. So, as we talk about, because I agree with you, outdoor seating here, you're going to want opportunities to get sun, and depending on how that plaza's facing, you know, you could have it covered, and it still has sun exposure, or you could have it, if it was on the northeast part of the building, you know, and it was completely covered, it's going to just be dark and, and green the whole time, right? So, I think part of it is, there's, there's room for discretion on how we apply this particular obligation, and we're going to hear from the applicant, you know, they're going to want the, the space to be hopefully successful as well as part of their project. So, there's going to be a lot of voices for us to consider before we say, "Okay, is there enough weather protection in that particular space?" So, I'm hoping that, and again, going back to what Lucy said earlier, three projects, and then let's talk about whether we drew the line in the right place or not.
And I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you think that you have that discretion, because I did not agree with the idea that it has to always be covered all the time, so.
Well, at the same time, this condition, right, applies to developer obligations in the SIP, but some of this, doesn't it cross over to the urban design guidelines? For example, you know, if we look on page 63 to 65 of the handout, it's on weather protection, and it says that weather protection that benefits the intended user, such as pedestrians, and outdoor seating. This is outdoor seating, right?
Yeah, it all works together, I think.
Yeah, so, is it required by urban design guidelines here, or?
Well, so, yeah. I guess the way I read this is it says, year-round outdoor seating opportunities. I, I think that means that they're, they are available, but not every outdoor seat is year-round protected. And there was actually a lot of discussion at the council related to the urban design page that you're identifying, Richard, of concerns where weather protection is protecting pots and things that, or, or even outdoor tables instead of the pedestrian who wants to walk along the building. So, I, I don't remember the exact language that got inserted, but there was some additional language put on that page to try and give priority to pedestrians using the page rather, the path that has weather protection, rather than other uses that might like it, but that wasn't the first priority.
Great, I see the comments on there really talk about the through-block passage and so on, and the overhang and all that, and that's really why one checkbox is checked on that list and not another. Okay.
All right, the final section is sustainable, and there are three obligations. One, conserve and restore natural areas and wildlife corridors. They said it was not applicable. Keith may think differently. This is not adjacent to any critical areas, there is a city-owned property, as I said, that's kind of park-like, but it's not an actual park. Incorporate green building measures such as approaches listed in the city's Sustainable Building Action Strategy. So, for this one, there wasn't a lot of information provided from the developer on their plans for that, but things like a green roof certainly could be incorporated, LED fixtures, solar panels, and then the Sustainable Building Action Strategy also talks about encouraging people to get out and use the outdoors and nature, and so, I probably also could have mentioned the through-block passage and connecting, making connections to the green necklace.
How do you, as an applicant, how do you make a distinction? What's your criteria for deciding whether it's going to be a green roof or social gathering areas?
Well, for this site, this was not in the urban core, so the roof, a rooftop, active roof was not required. So, I suppose the applicant would just need to decide if, if they wanted that as a feature of their development, and it made sense with the building and with their program and budget.
Katie, could you talk, I don't, I imagine the commissioners are not familiar with the Sustainable Building Action Strategy? And, and I think that there's some guidance in there that would help a developer select.
Yeah, so, the, the Green Building Action Strategy is a combination, it's a document that the city put together, and it's a combination of actions that the city wants to take to be a leader in sustainability, and then focuses, such as green building and activating, getting people outdoors and other things to help citizens be more active and sustainable, and also developers. So, it's, it has several strategies that a developer could consider for the project, and I think that it's also up to the developer to think through how they want to do that.
Not, just for general information, not having any architectural expertise at all, I assume, is there, is there a significant difference between the cost of a green roof for a new structure and designating it as a, you know, social gathering area with barbecues and stuff like that?
I don't know.
There may be more expertise on the commission to answer that.
Just a general, general question.
But one thing to think about, and, and actually, there's a project being built at Isaguac Highlands that has this, is the exiting requirements for things on the rooftop, actually, in the same way that parking constrains the number of units, exiting constrains the amount of space that can be devoted to a rooftop use, and so, that particular project chose to do a green roof for the rest of the area, because they had already, I guess, increased the loads to handle the activities, and so, those, and plus, it's more attractive, maybe. And so, they had both active areas for resident use and then green roof on the rest of it.
Both are really expensive. That's my only answer.
Okay.
I mean, they truly are, beyond just, you know, jingles.
Yeah. Does the Sustainable Building Action Strategy include a quantifiable measure like LEED, LEED certification?
No, it doesn't have a rating system like that. It's more kind of a, a list of different strategies to consider, some are appropriate to individuals, some are more city strategies and policies, so it's kind of a mixed bag, but it's not like a LEEDs, LEED rating system.
If an applicant was pursuing LEED certification, is there some overlap between the requirements for LEED and what some of these guidelines list? So, they could fulfill some of those requirements if they pursued LEED?
Sure, I would say that if they're, if they're pursuing LEED, that would be an example of meeting that green building directive that the action strategy talks about, for sure.
So, probably, I don't think you got it today, but it should be probably coming out tomorrow morning, the packet for next week's meeting, so unfortunately, all your good ideas won't necessarily show up in that staff report, but when that goes out, either Katie or I will try and send you a link to the Sustainable Building Action Strategy, just so you have a chance to familiar yourself, familiarize yourself with it.
And, and I'm going to put my staff on the spot and say, my expectation, similar to the conversation we had about the crosswalk, because we are not the experts in that document, it came out of our Office of Sustainability, I would expect we would have at least had a conversation with OS to say, "Okay, here's what they're planning to do for this particular application, do you think it meets this developer obligation or not?" And then, we would populate our staff report with that conversation. So, you guys at least see that. Now, you may say, "Well, okay, city's Office of Sustainability says, yes, they think it meets it," but you might say, "Well, you know, we think you lowbarred this, why don't you give us something else?" We can always, those are, this, again, this is a much more discretionary conversation over these things than a lot of the other stuff.
I guess just a process question, too, then, so if we extend, if this came through like this, and the condition was they had to do this, if it didn't come back to us, if we had a lot of conditions, it would sort of be, "Here's a general project, we'll tell them they have to do these things, and then staff will take a look at it," we would never really get a chance to review it. So, I guess the question would be, how much would we allow them to just condition to come back to staff versus bring it back in an actual project to us to look at?
Well, you know, part, I think that's part of why we're still in the two-meeting format.
Yeah.
So, that at the first meeting, if you said, "We, we want to have a role in this, we want to have more discussion about this, we think that you should actually think about and, you know, propose something rather than negotiate it later on," that's something we can address in the briefing response memo. And, you know, there will be some discussion items at next week's meeting, we, Katie and I have already been talking about how to do it, this was not one of them, but it may be, because you may not like the condition that's in there. So, I, I think that's the real advantage of that two-meeting format, is we, we hear from you where you feel like we need more information or clarity, and where the public feels that way, too. I mean, that's, that's what we've really found is important, because what we may think is the most essential pieces of the review of this may not be the same for the commission. That's, that's that value of bringing it to the community.
All right, the last one is, provide viewing platforms, educational signage, or other measures to help promote the natural environment. So, So this one has, oops, sorry, this one has a condition that the project needs to have educational signage promoting the nearby natural areas, the parks, the trail, added to the forecourt and/or the through-block passage to contribute to the sustainability goals. Okay.
So is this signage that we would be reviewing at a later date, or are we outside of that requirement?
Well, I mean, that, I don't know.
I think that it would be something that staff would then go through and implement.
Okay.
Okay. Before we move on, are there any other questions about the developer obligations? This is the last slide. All right. So the design manual review. Our project is kind of somewhere in here. We're in the traditional Isaguay area. And I opted for the Western false front style. I could have chosen several of the other traditional Isaguay architectural styles, but I wanted to choose one that was appropriate for mixed use and an active street experience. So I chose this one. This style can go up to four stories, even though the traditional, this one right here is in Skagway, Alaska, that the traditional look is about two stories, but it can go up to four stories. It's mixed-use, street-oriented, the facade extends beyond the roof to form a parapet, typically has wood lap siding, no mixed materials, the rectangular form. And just for the, once we get to the materials, the paint selection that I chose was based off of this building. So this is how it would look in building form. So what I was hoping to do is to show you the checklist first. So this is the checklist that's at the beginning of the packet. And a lot of the boxes are checked.
This is page 42 of your packet?
Yeah, page 42 of the packet. A lot of the items do not apply. And we didn't include the pages that did not apply in your packet. So part of the process was to take the whole document and just pull those pages that applied directly to the project. And we can have a discussion about whether fewer, even fewer pages are necessary or more pages. I included a couple pages that were more informational to give the context for different styles, for example. And the intent here isn't that you would go to this checklist and not also refer to the larger document. So we would expect that you would be reading the other pages as well to get the content, the definitions, the color wheel, and the maps and some of those other, that other information that's necessary to understand the project. But then we only pulled the checklist parts that were, that we would need to show you how we showed whether it was appropriate or inappropriate. And at the bottom of that, of the checklist, these are the conditions that we ended up with for the design manual, but those will also be repeated on the individual pages.
So in the future, you may not actually see the summary of all conditions on this overview page, because there might be too many of them. You will see the conditions on each of the individual pages that is generating a condition, but I don't know that we will be able to put the summary at the bottom of this overview checklist. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
And you may also not see the condition numbers. It may just be that we put an X if there is a condition, rather than try to create different numbering systems that may get confusing later on.
Okay. A question on the staff-proposed conditions, then, in that lower right box. So these are conditions one through five, and these are specific to the design and urban architecture and urban design manual only, chapter 18 of the CIDS.
Yes.
We just saw the other five or a number of conditions that were specific to the SIP, right? And these have the same numbers that they had.
Yeah.
So will that be confusing, or should this be, begin with number six? Or how will these finally be presented?
Frankly, when you see the staff report next week, it won't have any numbers for these.
Yeah, that's why we opted, I opted to not have, in further versions, I think there won't be any condition numbers on this checklist. It'll just say "condition," and then we'll figure out the numbering, because they will also be included in the staff report in the whole list. So they will appear there.
Okay. At some point, then, in the staff report, we'll see the entire list of conditions numbered all the way through.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Would it be an addition or basically a deletion? So staff, you said you might not see all of the staff-proposed conditions going forward, because if there are a lot of them, did I hear that correctly?
So let me, in this box.
In the box.
You would see them on each individual page and as a total, I think Richard makes a really good point, that in the staff report, all of the conditions generated by the design manual would show up there. So this is really to understand the genesis of the condition, as opposed to giving you a full list of conditions for the entire project.
What would constitute a staff comment, as opposed to a staff-proposed condition?
So if I'm looking, let's say I'm looking, well, here's an example. Sometimes, and I'm, and again, doing this from memory, but when I was looking at one style, there was, either for roofs or windows, there were options. Not every single appropriate one applied in all circumstances. And so we might explain that. You know, A, F, and G do not apply in this circumstance. C through E does apply, and it is consistent, or something. So it's mainly just to make sure you understand sort of the assumptions and the background thinking, or if we feel like we had to do an interpretation between two different provisions, how we fit them together, we would explain that. So it's just so that we're not just checking a box and then giving you a condition. We may have to unpack that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
So now I'm going to go back to here. Okay. So this is, I'm going to skip this, because we just talked about it. All right. So the first area that I wanted to talk about, so this is the first checklist page for the Western false front style. It's style number four. It's massing.
So Katie, could you do me a favor and go back to the actual checklist for a second?
Yep.
And go one page on. So this page did not have anything at the bottom. Katie had provided a, then had provided the summary of the style. My suggestion was to combine these two pages where you can see, I actually suggested that we put a dot on the map, so you can see where it is. We didn't on this one, but we did on the one you'll see next week. And then we just took the summary that appears on the next couple of pages and put it on the bottom of the page. So this acts as a little more of a summary page of the style and kind of how we got where we are. Is that a useful way to approach this? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, because that's what you're going to see next week.
We want to change it.
So would it be most helpful if I just stick with the checklist here, or do you want me to go back to where you can see the building as well on the PowerPoint?
Why don't you just stick with this until we get to a point where we need to see the building?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay. So as Lucy mentioned, these top, this top row here, those checkboxes apply just to the objective. I was confused when I started, and I thought that that was a summary of the whole sheet, but she corrected me. So this complies with the objective. The, I'm going to see if I can zoom in. Oh, good. So massing is talking about the basic rectangular block form. It's a simple flat roof. It has appropriately scaled parapet that doesn't, like in this example here, it's way too tall. And we say that, yes, it does have appropriate cornice at the upper level with the parapet, does have a simple geometric profile. The optional ground floor canopy awning or upper-level balcony terrace with wooden balusters, that does not apply. And it's not a corner building, so that also does not apply. And then those are the appropriate elements. And for inappropriate, we're saying it complies if it doesn't have the inappropriate thing. So it does not have over-scaled elements, ornamental ornamentation of the facade elements, and it does not have facade projections. So those are both appropriate, they both comply.
Do you think it would be a little bit more clear to just designate that as non-applicable in that case, or?
It's a good question.
I don't know what the staff, rest of the staff comments is on that.
For the inappropriate?
Inappropriate?
Well.
Has that been discussed, or?
I guess since it's inappropriate, I tend to agree with Katie that what we're saying is they have not included an inappropriate element, therefore it complies.
Okay.
But that is, the interesting question is, when would you check not appropriate or not applicable under inappropriate? So let us noodle on that one a little bit.
And I guess over time, as we start seeing it over and over again, we just get used to, you know, see.
Well, and we'll also discover if we maybe need to use not applicable.
After every three applications.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it possible to back up a couple pages to 46 to 65?
On the PowerPoint? Or I don't have the same.
We haven't gotten to 46 yet.
Oh. I'm going backwards, then. We're on 44.
All right. Next up is 45. So here we go. So the scale objective is that it shall not exceed four stories, which it does not. So this is an example of where I misunderstood the checkboxes, because I say it complies with conditions where I should have said it complies. Where the conditions come in is lower down. What do I say here?
I don't know.
Ah, so this should be over with here. There's a lot of boxes to check, so sometimes the Xs end up in the wrong place. So for this, for this scale, they're wanting to have articulation every 20 feet or 20 to 30 feet. This building has articulation every 40 feet, so that does not comply. So that's why the condition comes in, I'm on the wrong page here, that the architect would need to figure out a way to add articulation every 20 to 30 feet rather than every 40 feet.
Right. So C on that page would be applies with conditions, which is what you were trying to do there.
That's what I'm trying to get it to. Yep. Oops, geez. So that's, so then, in the staff comments, I talk about the height that's appropriate at three stories. The bays are at 40 feet, so they needed to be defined to 20, 30 feet. And then the facade steps back 20 feet at the western corner to accommodate the plaza, which is appropriate as well, because it's, it is not, it's an appropriate step back for still a street-oriented use.
And just to, I was thinking about your comment, Mel, about what would we put into staff comments. And I'm just thinking back to the Gilman Lofts project, where we initially said the roof was complex, and you guys said, no, it isn't. And I think that that's why the way Katie is doing kind of a very abbreviated description of how she thinks it's complying is a useful thing to make sure that the underlying assumptions that we used in checking certain boxes, as kind of a high level, not going through every single one, are necessary to help you guys verify or question those assumptions that we've made in doing the review.
That's good.
All right. Next up is walls, wall materials. This is all about prioritizing the front facade as the most important decorative side of the building with a higher level of detail and ornamentation, and then, and maintaining simplicity and two-dimensionality. So the project has ornamentation at the ground level with transom windows and detailed pillars and window frames. And then the lap siding continues around the side, but it's much more, much simpler without the same type of ornamentation. And the wall material is hardy plank. It will be simulated wood, which is appropriate and complies with wood trim. And we do not have painted wood signs, although it would be appropriate.
Question, is the appropriate, where those are listed, those are actually from the code we have or the design standards? So the, or simulated wood?
This is the same text as is in chapter 18. It just has boxes, checkboxes added.
Because I was wondering about the, when it talks about the Western false front style, it says wood lap siding, all wood, no mixed material.
Mm-hmm.
But I presume that if appropriate's in, if that's in there as well, that it could be simulated wood, it was.
Right. I think mixed materials is, they don't want something that looks like stone or a mixture of materials. We had a lot of discussion about the natural versus simulated. I don't, I frankly can't remember whether it was with you guys or with the council or just with the consultant. I think the, in the end, materials that, for instance, you know, a hardy.
Hardy plank.
Well, or hardy panel, maybe, in this case, it might be a panel, can look like wood unless you're up very close to it. And so I think that's why we allowed the simulated materials that appear like the natural material.
Okay. Thanks.
And then the project doesn't have any of the inappropriate metal, vinyl, stucco materials or combinations of stone brick tile. So there are no conditions on this area. All right. Windows, similarly, there were appropriate windows. They're mostly, they're either double-hung windows or large storefront windows that have wood frame. I think we didn't specify what the material of the windows were in the packet, so I suppose that would be something that would be reviewed at construction with additional detail.
And I think that actually brings up a really important point, that because these are architectural standards, there are going to be things where we don't get to the level of detail that, to answer everything. So for instance, we would want to be clear with an applicant, what kind of, that vinyl windows aren't allowed, for instance, make sure that that's apparent to them. But we would not necessarily have all the materials, all the door schedules, et cetera, worked out at land use. So we would continue that level of review with the construction permits.
I had a question about the inappropriate vinyl windows or inappropriate vinyl clad wood windows. Should it be wood-clad vinyl?
Good question. I don't know.
Wouldn't the wood want to show on the outside? All right. Doors, similarly, there are, the doors were compliant, they were appropriate. Glazed wood doors, the storefront doors are a wood. storefront doors are a wood, kind of a wood frame window with a large, or wood framed door with a large window, single hung, in a natural wood tone. There was not a lot of information provided about the, the amount of recess of the doors, just because of the nature of the drawing. So that would be something that would be looked at in more detail at construction.
Question on that one. So, on the top of objective is marked complies. So even there's, even though there is a condition here, does it mean that overall it complies with the objective even though there is a condition?
It complies with the objective, yes. And then, if you wanted to understand if it complied with the overall A.1, .4, .3, .3, you would go back to the, the very first checklist at the very beginning, and hopefully that says complies with condition. Let's see if I did it right.
So one small correction to what Katie said. The check, the three checkboxes at the top apply to both the objective and the description. So it's covering that whole sort of introductory piece at the top. And, you know, I think while you absolutely could go back and look at the summary checklist, you also get a good sense if there are conditions at the bottom, whether, how you're doing overall.
I had a question about specifics. I saw mention of overhead garage doors in the proposal. And this just may be that it's not captured here in the guidelines? How, how do we address something like that? This has been adopted. Should we revisit it down the road?
Maybe these doors are just talking about the person entry doors, and maybe the overhead doors would be more a window issue, if they were functioning as like a storefront feature.
And I know this is a mock proposal, so that's probably...
Well, down here, I mean, it's covered under urban design and parking structures and lots, right?
Right, but that, that wouldn't be relevant to this, this particular piece. I mean, I agree with Kevin that, or Katie, one of those K's.
Somebody.
Somebody, that you would go back to windows. Now, I think it is an interesting question, whether we're looking at doors, or whether we're looking at windows. Roll-up doors appears with certain styles, but they don't appear with this one. And I think that is a great introduction to some of the questions we're going to want to discuss with you next week, in which there isn't always clarity about exactly how these things comply. And I do think that, that this is not a recipe, a half tablespoon of this and a tablespoon of that. Some of things are like that, but some things are going to be a judgment call of whether they are meeting the spirit and the intent. Now, you could make a case that because this is supposed to have an active storefront, and roll-up windows might be integral to that. Or you might say, this is a Western false front, and that's going to be too industrial. I mean, I think those are the things that we're going to discuss and have to make a judgment call about.
Okay.
Based in the, you know, images and intent statements that are here.
Yeah, okay.
This one did not have checkboxes, so I added my own comments. I'm not sure if that's appropriate, but...
No, I think I asked, actually asked her to add them here, because I saw how you were using this, and I thought it was a good...
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway, this, the roof does comply, it has a flat roof shape, and no materials are provided for the door, or for the roof, but it will need to have a muted color. Okay, the color in your packet, oh, I even included, so here's the color palette we've chosen. This falls in the earth tones, appropriate earth tones range, that is included now in the front part of, so this is an example of information that's not included in these pages, but would be included in the larger design manual document. And we've chosen natural or stained wood, natural wood siding, and the earth tones, appropriate earth tones. And the body of the building will be a base color, this bluish color, and the accents will be the, the dark and the beige. And then, we are avoiding the bright, vibrant, vivid hues for the siding, and avoiding more than three colors.
When the applicant is presenting, you know, colors, do they typically bring in samples, or do they just have?
Typically, we would have a board that has the actual paint colors on them. It's easier than seeing it on the screen and not knowing exactly. And also, the physical materials are helpful to see the stone or the tile.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to have a photograph be an accurate representation.
Right, right.
Okay, this, is this one of the pages you were thinking about leaving out, leaving in or leaving out?
No.
No, okay.
And, and you will, I actually asked her to add the comment, the graphic designer, to add comments and conditions, because if you read at the very top of the page, up where it says "style," it says, "The following chart summarizes the various styles found in the design manual. Items in brackets are not explicitly stated in the text but are required by listing here." So we could end up with things that are only on this chart that weren't in the individual pages. I don't think we're looking to repeat a whole review here, but there could be circumstances in which something is regulated through this, these summary charts.
And I think this summary chart is a really useful tool for helping to, an applicant to determine what style is appropriate. They can go number of stories, they can see which buildings can be taller than two stories or one story even, up to however many stories they want, which can have balconies or not have balconies. If, if a gabled roof was important to the program, for whatever reason, that would take out several different styles. So, this is a, is a helpful tool, as well as a regulatory piece.
And you can see, if you're looking kind of in the upper third or half of the page, that for Western false front, footprint, symmetry, and orientation, those are in brackets, which means that based on the descriptions, the images, discussions with the consultant, we identified that those were the characteristics of this particular style, and so we added those to this table, even though they're not officially listed in the description. And so, if you had an asymmetrical Western false front building, we would say that was not in compliance, even though the word symmetry or asymmetry is not used in the style pages.
Question about that. So, in the future, do you think we should look to roll the information that's in brackets in this table into the actual text, so the developer sees it all in one spot, and isn't going to two different places for requirements?
I don't, after three permits, let's talk about it.
I think this chart is going to be fabulous for developers to have, look through and choose what they want to try doing. It's great.
My one, I mean, I did this because I needed to understand the styles, so it was something I did when I was reviewing it. But my fear is that it'll be exactly as Katie describes, they'll go to the chart, and they won't look at the rest of the pages, which have so much richer level of detail. So it's going to be incumbent on staff to really push them to look at that level of detail. This is a great starting point, and it is a good reference point, but it is not the same as the, the richer detail that the individual style pages contain.
Okay, so that, this is a continuation of that chart. That moves us out of the, are we out of that? So now we're into the urban design. And, not included in this, but included in the larger manual of the urban design section, it shows a map, it has a page that describes natural context areas and the urban design areas. This site was not in a natural context zone, because it didn't meet the criteria of being close to a natural area. So those provisions don't apply here. This provision does. This is harmony, talking about buildings must be good neighbors, blend in rather than stand out, the overall composition is more important than the design of an individual building. So, this proposal would be on a block that's pretty undeveloped at the moment, except for across the street, where the Atlas development's pretty large. But this would be of a harmonious, or a compatible scale with that development, even though the styles are very different.
But it's across the street from Vale, is it not?
It's around the corner, yeah. So, tell me, so the next three pages, I would like to discuss whether you think those are useful or not. I'm not questioning, I think it was great that Katie included them. I think there are two ways to think about the, like this page. Appropriate is that you're using an architectural style that is in the manual, that is part of achieving harmony. On the other hand, if you had a lot of, say, arts and crafts buildings in the area, and you picked urban grange, we might want to use this page to have that discussion about whether that's the right style or not. I mean, hopefully staff have done that before, they've gone to all the trouble of getting to the commission. But I'm interested in, you know, the, this page and the contrast page, which is next. I'm just trying to make sure we're giving you things that are useful for your discussions. Do you have thoughts about that?
I think it's useful. We can regret to include.
Okay, great.
And I, and I think this could be a really troublesome part for a lot of developments too, because, partly because I've never felt the need to say, because there's a bunch of arts and crafts buildings, you can't do something different in this block and change it. And I can see maybe a neighbor coming in and saying, you can't build that building here, because it's not in harmony with my buildings next to it. But I don't know that we want that as an outcome either, so...
Well, and I think it also depends on, if everything was built in 1970 around it, I'm not sure that's the harmony that we're looking for. So I think, I know we spent a long time on this harmony page, both the commission and the council, and staff and the consultant, because we're not trying to be in harmony with what we're moving away from. At the same time, if, you know, to pick one of your favorite buildings, Randy, if you're next to Calcarri, and you decide to do something really different than that, is that being respectful and in harmony? And, and that is kind of a performance standard, like some of the developer obligations, it's not a clear-cut answer. And I think it will be an interesting discussion as we, as we, as the city is evolving.
Yeah.
And does it matter if, are you trying to be in harmony, what if you're alone on a site, not surrounded by other buildings?
You get to set the style, baby.
That's, yeah, that's, that's really why I think this is a good test case, because I think we're going to be seeing this in Issaquah, and that's the point. You know, if there's nothing around it, you get, you get to decide, as long as it's concurrent with, with the design standards.
Although, I think one other thing to point out, though, up in the front, where it's kind of giving the overview of the styles, if you have multiple buildings in your project, so take Atlas as an example, which, even though it's really two buildings, it appears as three buildings. What, when we were talking about that project with the consultant, Crandell Arambula made the case that not all three buildings, let's say you picked arts and crafts, not all three buildings would have to be arts and crafts. You could make all three arts and crafts, but it could be craftsmen, arts and crafts, and grange, or whatever. So, it will, the whole harmony thing is going to be a very interesting thing to see how it evolves, because we're not looking for uniformity, like you're the first person on the block, and now everybody else has to be grange. We're not, we're not trying to do that. I mean, if you look at Front Street, that's not the nature of Front Street, and I think we all think that's a really great street. And it's got all of these styles up here along Front Street.
Block size, this is a page that's maybe just informational, maybe it could be left out in the future, but it helped to define the maximum dimensions for a block. And, as we've said, this project has a through-block passage, and it appropriately aligns between a development site with an existing through-block passage, and it does not, it's not misaligned, disconnected, well, it is, I guess, a dead-end passage.
Well, I, I would say it's, it's the first phase.
Phase one, with, I mean, that's, yeah. Debatable, I guess.
The other thing that's going to, I mean, when you go to the next page?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think this one actually complies with this through-block passage, because it's 40 feet wide at a minimum.
Oh.
But, there, I mean, and this is going to be the interesting thing, Crandell Arambula recognized that the through-block passages that are in the central Issaquah standards, which are smaller, are appropriate on, you know, these are more for full-block developments, rather than these infill, single-lot, relatively modest-sized properties. So, you know, at this point, we are, we're working on integrating the design manual into Title 18, and there may need to be some reshuffling, so that all the tools are together, because right now, we just have these ones that are really sized for quite large developments. Something this size, 40 feet wide, would basically blow up that whole project.
Unless we could have half of it go on the neighboring property, or something like that, if they could coordinate having half and half. I'm going to go a little bit quicker, just in interest of time, but if I'm going too fast, please slow me down. This alleys, I'm not sure why this one was, there's not an alley, I'm not sure why this one was included. East of the, oh, I suppose the, I'm going to skip this one. All right, so the parking structure is entered from a driveway, and it, this is the condition about the overhead doors, that not a lot, not enough information was provided to show whether or not they were, had appropriate colors and materials. And, building edges, this is talking about the mass of the building creating an outdoor room along the street. So they want buildings to be built up to the street edge, which this building is. And it has a plaza forecourt that emphasizes the street edge and also provides public And the entries to the ground floor retail here are all at grade appropriately, and they're clearly identified through the, the different door and entry window elements. Ground floor transparency, this meets the, it's nearly entirely transparent, so it meets the minimum requirements for window transparency for retail. They could be, it, the use of these spaces, it doesn't necessarily have to be retail, it could be office, but the way that it's designed, it, it looks more, it expresses more as a retail use, so that's why I chose this page.
And this is, hold on just one second, this one does talk about roll-up doors, Kevin?
Yeah.
And so, that's going to be an interesting question about how something that's in one of these urban design pages relates to something in a style page, and whether we have a concern with how that might change the character of the building.
But, I mean, the character also ties to the use, right?
Right.
Like, are we trying to activate that space?
Right.
And would... And would this enhance that? So I guess, to your point, it's in our discretion as long as it integrates. You know, if you go back a couple pages, I think that's a really good example of a door that integrates, 59 of 65. So I think we just have to push it at that point to ensure integration, right?
Okay, great.
Question there, right on page 59 to 65. I'm trying to understand when the objective is marked "complies" and when it's marked "complies with conditions." On there, there's a condition at the bottom of the page there about integrating the overhead parking doors. So should C be marked "complies with conditions"?
Do they overgrudge doors?
I think you're probably right.
And then, if that's true, then, but overall, as objective, does it comply or only comply with conditions? You know, this is kind of the same question I had a little while ago.
So the checkbox, this was something Katie and I were kind of working through. The checkboxes at the top are just about the objectives and descriptions. So even if, if there's no condition coming out of the objective or the description, you would not check "complies with conditions." That's really to help, say, how they're doing with the objective and description. Conditions that are coming out of the inappropriate and appropriate would also get a check mark if, so you might have the top one that says "complies" and then have conditions that are generated by the appropriate or inappropriate details.
Right, okay. Why, then, would the objective and description be "complies with conditions" here?
I think it was a leftover from the way she did it before, which was the overall page.
Just a mistake.
Thanks.
All right, on to weather protection. So this one, the project has a canopy along the sidewalk and the through-block passage. And there's some coverage also at the plaza. So it's compliant. It does not have any of the inappropriate materials. It's, the materials haven't really been detailed, but we're assuming that it's a metal canopy. Or, I'm not actually sure what we're assuming it is, but it's, we're assuming that it's an appropriate material. And then finally, this is addressing the forecourt, the little plaza at the front of the building. And it is a human-scale space. There's landscape elements with, there's planters, some seating and tables. And we've avoided blank walls and unusable spaces. And I think, have we talked about weather protection yet? I was going to call attention to, I think it was here that it talks about, yeah, weather protection that benefits the intended users, such as pedestrians and outdoor seating. So that's, we did our best not to just cover the planters. And that is it.
So, I, you know, we went through this in a great deal of detail tonight because we wanted to hear your feedback. We wanted to sort of discuss about how we've been doing this. As you well, as many of the longtime commissioners know, when we do a regular permit, before we had the design manual, we would spend two hours, you know, between taking public comment, making a presentation, applicant making a presentation and talking through it. So my question for you, I'm trying to think about, I don't think any of us want to be here till midnight. And I want to do what's meaningful, I want us to do what's meaningful to you. And yet, I'm also cognizant of time. You are going to get all the same level of detail that you're seeing here. Would it be useful to just go to the pages that you want to discuss or which have conditions? Or are you thinking that we're going to go through this at this level of detail for all pages? I'm just curious. I hadn't really thought about that till I saw how long it took us to go through this.
It's not midnight yet.
But we didn't do all the other sections of the Central Issaquah standards like we normally would.
Lucy, quick question. So do we have this package, exact same package, in front of us when the applicant's presenting? Is that, is that, is that --
You, you'll get a package like this electronically about a week in advance. And a day or two later, you'll get the paper version.
Okay.
So you will have had a chance to review it and think about it ahead of time.
While referencing the applicant's design package.
Right, you'll have their plant drawing set. You will have a checklist that covers the rest of the Central Issaquah standards. You'll have this design manual checklist. And you'll have a much more detailed staff report. Katie did a good job of just kind of giving you an overview relative to this mock permit. So just for the new commissioners, we typically, in a meeting, only do one permit. We would have a staff presentation that might be about 20 minutes. The applicant would have an opportunity to present things. We ask them not to be redundant, not to repeat the stuff that staff have covered, but to take the opportunity to sort of talk through concerns they have with conditions, things that staff wouldn't know. I mean, it might be vision or like the, someone's question about apartments versus condos. They may speak to that. That's not something the city regulates. So they would have an opportunity. Commissioners are asking questions as we go through that, take public comment. And then the commissioners really turn toward comments and questions and concerns that they see. We assemble all of, then we go away after the first meeting and work with the applicant to respond to those things that we've heard from the public and the commission and come back and have another discussion around that and ask the commission to make a decision.
Yeah, thank you.
Now I gave you the tick, the doo-doo-doo, doo-doo-doo-doo, time to think about what you want us to do next week.
Well, and I guess my thought would be, since we have it ahead of time, we'll have the checklist. We have lots to go through. We'll see all the conditions you think need to be in there. I don't think we would need to go through every step of it, but more just either concerns that we have separately or the conditions, items you've brought up, or something else that might come up in public comment.
Okay.
That's my thought.
So the checklist to us might even be like reference material and we would just focus on the points made in the staff report as usual and conditions made in the staff report instead of necessarily going through every point on the checklist in the meeting?
During the meeting.
During the meeting. We would.
So what will look kind of familiar, based on the staff report you're going to see next week, when we get, when Katie gets to the section in the staff report, that's the design manual. There's maybe three to five paragraphs that are kind of introductory, sort of setting the stage for the checklist. And then you're really referred to go look at the checklist. And so I think, kind of similar to this particular checklist, there are going to be some pages that are just a little bit of an overview or a commentary or explanation. And then there are some pages that have conditions. So I think what we might try next time is then just focusing on the ones with conditions. And you are, of course, welcome to stop us and say, "No, I think we, you know, I don't disagree. I don't understand your description here or the boxes you've checked." And we can certainly stop anywhere that you want to. But we'll go into it focusing on the pages with conditions.
And, but retain the ability to identify potentially additional conditions.
Oh, of course.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, and that's a good point. I mean, it's not only where you have questions or concerns with our evaluation, whether we have a condition there or not. But that would, of course, be an opportunity to say, "A condition needs edits," or "We think an additional condition is needed." Absolutely.
So, who administers that flow of review? Would it be the chair or staff? You know, for instance, like we're still going to move through checklists to a degree, right? Even though we're not hitting on each point, we're hitting on maybe the conditions on urban design, usable open space. So who's setting, who sort of navigates and sets that cadence?
So I'm just shooting from the hip here. I guess my thought is that based on your, the commission's recommendation for how to approach this, Katie would have the entire checklist, the entire excerpted checklist, like this one, up on the screen the way she did tonight. She would give some introduction, then go to the pages that have conditions. But as we're scrolling through that, the commission could stop her at whatever page there was additional questions or concerns. Do you, does that seem workable?
This would be in the first, the first part, as it is now, up to now, that where the staff presentation is first, and that would be when this would be done. Then the applicant, then the --
And we'll talk after next week and see how it went and see if we need to try --
There's a certainty of just working it. Just do it.
Yeah. You guys are good at jumping in and saying, "Slow down, I need to go look at that page again."
Not anybody real bashful on this group. So is that what you want to do? All right, other comments or concerns or questions?
I think this was great to do this and go through this. Thank you, Katie, for all your work.
Katie did a great job. It was really valuable, really valuable.
I move your approval project.
Please don't.
Don't say that, don't say that because people, there's some concern that we're trying to sneak something in here. It really is a, it's not a project.
This is a fake project.
It really is not a project. It's a mock project.
It's not a name.
Right. That's right. So I think, if you don't mind, just, I'd like to make a couple comments about Commissioner Harrison. Last time he was with us on the Development Commission. Randy and I have worked together for a long time on this commission. And when he first came to the commission, he has shown an amazing love for this city and an incredible enthusiasm for the civic process that we have in Issaquah. He's shown that love and enthusiasm in every single aspect of what he's done in his service on the Development Commission. And that love and enthusiasm combined with his extensive experience on the Development Commission, I think make him the perfect member of the Planning Policy Commission. The city's very fortunate. The city's a better place, the dedication and service Randy has provided. And I know I'm a better commissioner for everything I've learned from Randy over the years. And I feel incredibly blessed to have served with Randy for so many years. And even more importantly, to consider myself one of his many friends. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. And I'm glad that this has come up because I wanted to say now, and to my fellow commissioners, that serving on this commission has been one of the best experiences of my life. To be in this town at this time with the challenges that we face in the past, the traditions, the community. And I hope that on the Planning Policy Commission, I'm going to be able to just change a little bit of what I believe is our job, which is to maintain the character of this wonderful town while accommodating inevitable growth. It's a very difficult job. But I am so honored by the opportunity to be on this commission and to be the beneficiary of the friendship and the council that I see coming from the staff and from my fellow commissioners. I, it's just literally been one of the best experiences of my life. And I've had a lot of really great experiences. And this is right up there at the top. So thank you, everybody who's had anything to do with this. It's been wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
We do appreciate your service. Thank you very much. And I think with that, we probably ought to adjourn. And we didn't go till midnight.
Thank you.